Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Oshewski.
Here.
Alderman Keahan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Spencer has been excused.
First item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding the proposed rezoning of property located west of Kernan Avenue and north of Highway 10114, portions of parcels 701-81101, 701-81102, 701-81103, and 700-70072 from our one single-family to planned unit development. Director Kyle, would you like to give us a quick synopsis of what the project is?
Sure. The proposed development consists of nine-unit condominium adjacent to a private street. The street already is in existence and has been for some time. The developer originally sought to develop this as a regular single-family subdivision, but there were issues with permitting for the street in proximity to the state trunk highway right-of-way. So to resolve that issue, the developer has since requested to do this as a condominium, and hence, the rezoning is necessary because of the public street and the fact that the lots would not abut a public street if that were just the traditional single-family residential zoning.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public here who wishes to comment on the proposed rezoning this evening? If you would, you'd please step up to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll move on to public comment on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment on any matter of concern to the city this evening? If you could just step up to either one of you, if you could step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lily O'Connell. My husband, Richard, and I purchased a lot at 816 Arthur Street. We then had several large trees cut down. A neighbor called me and told me about the extensive drainage system on our property, something we were unaware of. No one told us. Then the neighbor asked, "What kind of house are you going to build? Duplex, two-story, one-story?" He also informed me that we could probably fit a garage on our lot designed around his drainage system. His wife also told me on the trees that were cut down what root balls we could remove, what trees could be cut down to the ground level only. It felt more like their property than ours. I asked if she had an easement. She said she would call me back, and she never did. None of the neighbors, the city, or the landscaper who installed the system have an easement. Couple of lawyers told us that we can do whatever we want with anything on our property. We owe the neighbors nothing. They should have obtained an easement at the time of installation. We considered removing the system, but we left it there. I got a call from Greg Kyle. He said he didn't have an opinion either way on this matter, but said to me, "I seriously caution you not to remove this system." We have also had two neighbors threaten us over this system. I set up a meeting with Greg Kyle. He wanted us to give an easement to Rick Koenetzky. We said no. I asked if this would prevent us from getting permits. He said no. But eventually, he did something else to us, him and Tim Montour. We had our house built. It was finished in November, and the basement was backfilled with dirt. It was then that we realized how very low our basement is. Only one or two inches of our basement is showing and visible above ground. We have a basement window that should be above ground, but is underground. Our outside faucets are so low, we can hardly bend down to reach them. I asked the builder, Jerry Hoseau, "What happened?" He told me that the city sets the depth of the basement, not the builder. He said he asked Tim Montour twice if he could raise our basement height to be even with the neighbors on either side of us, twice. Tim Montour said, "No. I will tell you where to place the basement. You will listen to me." Then I went to City Hall to talk to Kyle or Montour. No one would see me until I asked how to get on the agenda for a council meeting. Then I was told by an office girl, "All of the engineers are reviewing your plans right now." After a bit of a while, Montour came out and talked to me. He couldn't even look me in the eye. He started out by telling me that our basement should have been raised at least five inches. He told me this twice. He said someone must have moved the nail on the telephone post. Our builder said this is nonsense. We moved into our house December 11th. On December 14th, we had four inches of raw sewage in our basement. Our drywall is ruined. Our basement floor is stained brown from feces. We have to remove the drywall because mold may grow. I called our insurance agent, and he told me he never in his career got a call on a brand-new house saying a sewer has backed up. He said it was very odd and unusual. We want to know, who inspected our basement? How did it pass inspection? And why was our basement purposely placed low? I think you need to ask Greg Kyle, and you need to ask Tim Montour, because they know. Our builder says our house should have been raised at least 12 inches. If you look at the houses on either side of us, our house is low. If you look at our yard, our yard is low. If Kyle and Montour wanted to hurt us, I congratulate them. They did. Every time we get a rainfall, now we will have a backup. The builder says the city owes us landscaping around our house at their expense, and that's all I have to say. We would like a statement from the building inspector, why our basement passed inspection. We would like a statement signed by him. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Yes, I'm Bonnie Dolphausser, 85 Taco Street. I have some questions on why your city code enforcement officer is letting things pass. At 76 Taco Street, they had the...came to their house and told them that they had to have their house painted, let it fail. His house isn't painted. It has primer on the house. Some other house painted is not painted. So that's gone on for six months. That house isn't painted. Also, 301 First Street, for four months, house has been...windows have been left open to the elements. Their fence has fallen down. Weeds were five feet tall. I wouldn't cut down. The house was abandoned for five months. I cut down. There's a garage with a big old hole in it, finally, where the vermin were crawling. I had to call Valley Pest Control so they weren't coming to my house. Metal pole about 10 feet long that's still lying on their side of the property, also with a stove in their backyard. Also, that is a house...this house has been unsecured for five months or longer, that I've been going to secure that house when the wind's blowing that door open. Also, sometimes lights go on, so I've been going over to check that house. I shouldn't be going over there. That's not my house. I live next to that house. It's not my problem. This is your problem. The city has failed, and you people are failing. This code enforcement, city police are failing. This house is empty, people. What's going on? You guys are failing at your jobs here. City Attorney, Code Enforcement, Health Department, City Inspector. The foundation is breaking. It's breaking away, and you guys are letting people move into this house? Somebody just moved in this house last week, and you're letting somebody move in this place? Mold is...this is ridiculous! And you're letting people move in this house? How ridiculous! This is ridiculous, that you're letting people move into a house that's been vacant for months. How ridiculous that you let people move into this house that's been vacant for months. How ridiculous! Code Enforcement, Health Inspector, and Health Department, you let people move into a house that's been vacant!
Thank you, Ms. Dolphausser.
No, I'm not done yet!
Well, then, let's not be accusing people...
Plus, the house that's been on Taco and on First Street, that's been in the court system, that windows have been boarded up in the third floor, in the garage that should have been torn down, in garbage and things that should have been torn down. And you're responsible for this, Mayor. You're not doing your job. City Attorney, this has been in the court system. You're not doing your job either. You guys have all failed to do your jobs. Ridiculous. Do your jobs, people. I don't know what we're paying you for.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Chris Klein, 730 KIS. Have some questions and some comments on the walkway project that we have on the agenda today. First of all, I think it's a great opportunity to spruce up our downtown, so hopefully, we take a good look at this and we do it the right way. But according to the scope of the development agreement and this project, what we're required to do as a city and as taxpayers and within this TIF are to make a safe walkway for the workers from the building across Main Street to the parking ramp. A couple of questions on this. First of all, where's the funding coming from on this? And what is the budget on this? It's really difficult to see these. I actually had a magnifying glass to try to read these with my advanced years. I still can't see some of these numbers. So hopefully, we can go over some of you guys, I asked some of the questions on the budgeting and where we're at now that you made some changes. Has the scope of the project changed since our Board of Public Works meeting? So hopefully, we can go over that, because I didn't see a map in tonight's packet, but there was a nice map of the scope of the project from the Public Works meeting. Alderman Bennett came up with some issues, maybe with some movable furniture. I agree. That's just asking for things to be stolen. I know that the project manager on that thought that it was pretty minimal, and these are inexpensive items, but it's still taxpayer money, and, you know, none of us in this room would put anything out that we think has the potential of being stolen. Now, also, consider the final design with this. This walkway is a wind tunnel, and if you've ever been through there, it swirls with the wind, and it also gathers a lot of garbage and debris. So consider when you're talking about this design, that low shrubbery and maybe close-to-wall benches and things like that are going to jam up with debris and become unsightly. So consider that as well. The other thing is, looking at the scope of this project, and I highlighted some areas on here, there's kind of three areas here. One is that angle walkway that cuts across private property from Mill Street to Main Street. That is actually also in another TIF. That's TIF 3. This scope of this project is to be, from what I understand, gets paid for out of TIF 13. And hopefully, someone will ask the question, how we're paying...first of all, why are we upgrading private property? And secondly, how are we paying from TIF 13 to pay for a project on TIF 3? And also, there's some areas that are behind the old Manassas Grill and the Wild Apple that also looks like on the scope of this, that they're also getting renovated and landscaped. And I wondered if that is our responsibility as taxpayers to pay for that private property back there as well. Now, an opportunity for these folks is that if they're interested in it, they can, you know, use the contractors, they'll be on site. Maybe they help them save some costs on that. But I don't believe that us as taxpayers should be responsible for upgrading or paying for any of that private property there. I guess those are the only questions I have. I know that I've had a few people ask me about this, so hopefully, you guys will ask some questions tonight and help me answer some of these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. Chief Oxer has our new firefighter, Ben Farrenkrug, here to administer the oath of office this evening. Chief and Ben.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank everyone for allowing us to meet here this evening during this holiday season. And I'd like to thank the council for allowing us the opportunity to introduce to you the newest member of Nina Manassas Fire Rescue. Over the last year, it has been my distinct honor and privilege to swear in, well, having...not swearing, but be able to swear on our fourth individual that has joined our department in the last year. Tonight, we tab that fourth individual in front of us, Benjamin Ben Farrenkrug. Ben was joined here...Ben is joined here tonight by his father, Mark, currently a fire officer at Nina Manassas Fire Rescue, and his mother, Sue; grandfather, Bill Farrenkrug, former Assistant Chief with Nina Manassas Fire Rescue; and his grandmother, Sandy, along with other relatives and friends. It has been an honor and privilege to work with his father and grandfather for my entire career as a member of both the Nina Fire Department and currently, Nina Manassas Fire Rescue. Ben and I have sat and talked about the responsibility he has in meeting the high standards that have been set by his father and his grandfather, and from what I have seen and heard, it appears that he will be able to meet and even exceed those high standards. Ben will be filling the vacant line position left when Vic Voss was promoted to the Deputy Chief position at Nina Manassas Fire Rescue. I'll have you know that the hiring process included a written and physical agility test administered through Fox Valley Technical College, interviews and assessments conducted by an internal hiring committee, and interviews with Nina Manassas Fire Rescue's Joint Fire Commission. Ben scored extremely high in all the areas and should be proud of the way he represented himself and his family. I am very confident that Nina Manassas Fire Rescue is getting an extremely knowledgeable and skilled firefighter, one that will enhance the service that it will provide to the citizens of this community. Ben attended Fox Valley Technical College and has earned a degree in both fire science and the paramedic program. His work experience includes almost two years as a paramedic with Gold Cross, and we were fortunate enough to have Ben as an intern at Nina Manassas Fire Rescue, and through that experience, where crews were actually working with him, became very comfortable and confident in how he handled himself and how he would present himself as a member of Nina Manassas Fire Rescue. Crews spoke very highly of him and recommended he be considered for the position. His official start date was Monday, December 7th. He'll be completing four weeks of recruit school and start the 24-hour shift on the red shift, January 20th. At this time, I'd like City Clerk Debbie Galiazi to come up and swear in Nina Manassas Fire Rescue's newest member, Benjamin Farrenkrug.
(Inaudible) please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Benjamin Farrenkrug.
I, Benjamin Farrenkrug.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter.
To do my duty as a firefighter.
For the cities of Nina and Manassas.
For the cities of Nina and Manassas.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the cities of Nina and Manassas.
To serve the citizens of the cities of Nina and Manassas.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions.
And to uphold the laws and constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Wisconsin.
The state of Wisconsin.
And the cities of Nina and Manassas.
And the cities of Nina and Manassas.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'd like to ask both Ben's father, Mark, and his grandfather, Bill, to come up. We're officially going to have Mark use his firefighter badge that he had when he was a firefighter at Nina Manassas Fire Rescue to pin that badge on Benjamin.
Congratulations, Ben, and welcome to the Fire Department. Item two is the minutes and communications to be received and placed on file. Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive minutes to receive A through H in Communications, I and J.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Yeah, he put it in, he worked it out.
Item G is the consent agenda. There are seven items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of December 7th, the recommendations from the Board of Public Works from December 7th for the downtown pedestrian walkway improvements, the change order to Yankee General Contractors on the Gilbert Waterfront Trail for a deduct of $17,654.46, a change order to Yankee General Contractors on the Gilbert Trestle improvements, that's a deduct of $41,801.80, and a payment to Yankee General Contractors for the Gilbert Waterfront Trail. It's payment six and final at $38,133.28, and a payment to Yankee General Contractors for the Gilbert Trestle improvements. It's payment number five and the final payment of $40,426.94. And the plan commission recommendation from December 8th for the preliminary plot for the second addition to Woodland Heights conditioned on the 50-foot setback line from the navigable stream being shown on the plot, staff review of the drainage easement width, and the City of Manassas retain and outlawed at the termination of the cul-de-sac. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Taylor?
Two and seven.
Are there any other items that anyone wishes to have separated? Seeing no one else, do we have a motion for the remaining items?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the remaining items.
Do we have a second? So the items that were removed were the pedestrian walkway improvements and the preliminary plot. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Keahan, roll call 7-0.
Item two is the approval for the downtown pedestrian walkway improvements. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the downtown pedestrian walkway improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Kyle, it looks like you're the lucky person who gets to answer questions about this this evening. I appreciate the work that's been done on this since the last meeting. I know I was the one who questioned the cost because it was coming in over budget, and everyone has worked successfully to bring those funds back in line with the money that was budgeted for this project, so I appreciate everyone's work on that. Thank you for that. There were some things that were highlighted in orange on our new printout, and some things that were tabbed in red. Could you review what those are, please?
Okay. Well, the issue related to the diagonal walk, this was the section of walkway that extended where the crosswalk terminated at the south end of Main Street and then cut through the existing faith office property back over to the Mill Street right-of-way. And that was removed from the schedule here because that's being installed by the developer at its expense, so that's no longer part of the project. And I didn't put this table together, and I didn't communicate with the person that did, so I'm not sure what the red banding actually relates to.
But the orange items were items that were removed because we believe they can be...
The city's installing some of these items. That's correct. So by and large, we took some things out, we modified some things, and we've substituted city crews doing the work for having that contracted.
I'm just looking over those red tabs again, and it looks like most of them have to do with shrubbery and plantings associated with the project. And last week, we were looking at a number of $251,378, and this week, we have $135,256. So I'm grateful for the work that was done, and I can support this project going forward. Thank you.
Do you want to explain the correct numbers?
Yeah. The total is that 222, the number below that.
Yeah, I heard the wrong one. Thank you.
And then, there were a few alternate bid items which would allow us to bring that down should we decide, should the, you know, bids come in higher or that sort of thing that we would not then do.
Can't hear any of that, Greg.
There's a...if you see, as you go down that column, there's a total of 222 for 12, and below that, there were some items that are to be bid as alternates, and should either our bids come in high or that sort of thing, we would elect not to do the alternates, and that would reduce the cost by roughly $21,000.
Do you have some discussion items, Alderman Taylor?
Thank you. Greg, so the total cost is a 222 or is it 201?
It's...well, we're proposing to bid this out at 220 with the full amount, so that would be our cost if all of these items that are in this tally here were done. So again, the items below that were potential things that could be pulled out.
We should probably step back just for a moment. This is an estimate of what we think the project would cost. The next step is to create bid drawings and construction documents. Those will then be bid to a general contractor or others, and they'll come back with the final costs at that point, and then we'll approve or disapprove those. Can I continue, Alderman Taylor?
I had a couple of questions as former Alvin Klein had. Private property, can you address that issue about any private property, Greg?
Yes. There's two things that are shown on private property. The one being associated with the walkway and the adjacent Wild Apple, the rear of that structure, and the professionals that we asked to put the plan together were requested to kind of sort of show in their drawing how that site could be integrated with the walkway. However, any improvements that would be made behind Wild Apple on private property would be at their expense. And the other piece, there's that diagonal walkway with the proposed statue, all of that... All of that would be at the developer's expense.
I noticed another thing with private property. Art furnishings allow $5,000 for wall art. And according to these drawings, it looks like this wall art is on the former Minasha Grill and on the Wild Apple building. How is the placement of tax dollars for wall art? How is that? How, how do we do that?
Well, there would need to be an agreement entered into with both of those properties that would allow the placement of essentially a public art piece on their structure. And, you know, the exact nature of that will be something that will be coming forward in the future.
Okay. Also, Mr. Klein had mentioned something that I, I thought of too, you know, of being on board with this early on. The developers said what they want is a safe walkway to work for this, between the ramp and their building. And I see, you know, things like called dining room tables, the family room. There's a table on here for a community table, $5,000 for this large table here. And I was doing a little bit of work on public spaces and there's some hesitation out there with designers about adding large tables and, and public spaces like that because you may attract a certain crowd that you may want or may not want. And I know when the hotel was there, speaking to the people, one of the businesses that, there was always people sitting on the benches out there and they didn't care for that. And then there'd be two of them and five of them, six of them. One thing I know people don't like is a, a large crowd of other people, especially in a walkway, and provide a safe walkway to work. And I know our downtown is evolving and changing, but, you know, if it's a, a large group of teenagers hanging out at that table or other undesirable people, that could be rather threatening. So I don't know if that's a good purpose of that $5,000 to have a, a large table like that. What's your thoughts on it?
Well, you know, I, I kind of leave these things to our design professionals. I think what their, what their goal was, was to create an inviting public space, a place that people would be comfortable both walking through as well as sitting in. And, I mean, you can envision that this space can be used in negative ways as you described, but it, I, you can also envision it being used in positive ways by people, you know, eating lunch there, you know, sharing conversation, that kind of thing. And I think that's sort of what the expectation is. If it turns out different than that, then obviously we need to make some adjustments. But I think as you indicated, we are going through a transition and a very positive transition. And the character of our downtown is changing in a very meaningful way. And hopefully, we won't, you know, end up in a scenario where, where we're getting negative elements that are, you know, kind of detracting from the gains that we have made.
But if you set them up for that, it's, you know, you could have that. I have no problem with the smaller tables and that, especially now we find out we're going to have a coffee shop next door there or something like that. And, you know, if it's two people or four people, but I don't know. I see on the furniture here, it's 18 chairs at $250 apiece. I mean, 18 chairs. I don't know how big this table is. I don't see the dimensions on it. And, you know, sometimes when you create something, you could create something that, that you don't want. And I think with the smaller tables and things, I don't know how, how many big groups of people are you going to come and sit at this, this big table here?
I don't think that, that it's, that the intent was that there would be large meeting groups there. It's just people to come and share a common space together. And, I mean, the, the group that was formed to, to aid in the, or guide the design for this did include, you know, the developer, person from Faith, city staff. I believe both yourself and Alderman Nichols were invited to those sessions. And the design that was arrived at was a collaborative design that they seemed to like. So there may be elements of things that some of us don't like or agree with, but, you know, I, I, there was a process, there was a conclusion to that process, and I think we ought to go with what was planned.
I'm just calling something out here because it's in my district and also what we have there is we have a serious bird dropping problem. And I see that there's a cutaway in this large table with a tree right above it. And the three merchants down there and after me for the last couple of years with the bird problems we have, and it is an extensive problem that we have with birds. Now you want to put the, the family room with the dining room table there, right with the tree, kind of carve right out on it. And by no means am I being negative. I'm just bringing up something that could be some problems for us here. And trying to head off something at the pass. So with the, the issues that I've had with, with that district. It says the last, on the bottom, salvage stone seating, 44 salvage stones, stone seating. Where are those 44 stones going to be? It's on the last site lighting allowance.
The, the stone will be used on the, sort of on the interior edges of the site. Some of it is intended to be also as seating. I think, I don't have my drawing here, so...
That's 44 lineal feet.
Was 44 stones, sir?
No, 44 lineal feet. If you look, the next line says lineal feet.
Stone, is that in that walkway area?
Yes.
James, can you, James, can you put your paper on the microphone? It's making some interesting noises. When you're scraping up against the microphone, it makes an interesting noise.
Oh, I couldn't hear. So what did you say? That's just lineal feet?
It's lineal feet. If you look, it says 44 LF. So that's 44 lineal feet of...
Is that in that same area?
Yes. And I believe it's on the, the east, the northeast side of the walkway.
Why would we, we be voting on this before a public, why wouldn't we have a public hearing on this with the amount of dollars involved and part of our downtown community, especially that it's not just a walkway? Now it's a, it's much more than that. So when would we have a public hearing?
We have not looked at having a public hearing?
I would think for the amount of money, we should have had some input from the public on this. But they want to see their downtown look like too. So you don't, you don't intend on having one?
We formed a committee of, well, we, we formed a committee of the people that were in the downtown area as well as the two aldermen, and that was where we were gauging our public input from, yes.
And it doesn't sound like it's taken too, too good either, you know, just because you make a couple of comments on something, right away you get the negative brush, Mayor, you know?
I didn't say anything.
It's always that way.
I just said that we had a group of people.
I, I would like a public hearing on this before the council votes on it. Why not the city spending 200 and some thousand dollars on a public walkway in a public situation here?
I don't know if we have time to keep it on schedule, if we wait another two weeks to do that?
Well, what we're running up against is the bid timeline for getting this thing, getting the walkway constructed by April 15. And this was very narrow to get it, to be able to accomplish it by then. I, I know that's not what people want to hear because we're always up against deadlines. But this, this is, I mean, we're having an unusual winter so far, but if we get into a situation where we're having a late spring and we're not able to get this hard surface in, that's a problem. And the other thing I'd like to say is that, you know, this walkway, you know, this was all part of the development concept plan. So we were going to be building a, a walkway. We were going to be creating these amenities. That was all part of the TIFF project plan. So it's not like this is something that's brand new. What is new about it is now we have a design that's articulated in a way that, that deals with some of the aesthetics that weren't really that well detailed when we were first putting the plan together and getting the TIFF created. But the, the funding, I mean, all of that has been in place since July.
Well, I understand that, and it was to provide a safe walkway to work, and that was the start of it. Now it's, you know, there's a lot of things on here that I think the community should have at least got a look at it, should have been posted at the library, and should have been some input on it from them too. And I have no problem with that, but like former Alderman Klein said, there's a lot of other elements in this that it's more than just a safe walkway to work. And there's a lot of dollars here that the community, if the developer wanted to spend these dollars on all these amenities, that's fine. But I think the public has a right to look at it too and get their input. It's just my opinion.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Greg, on the private property, um, alleyway or behind those two buildings, is there any commitment on that? Does there's dollar, preliminary, preliminary dollar amounts out there? Is there any commitment on that yet?
No, not that I'm aware of. Other than, when you say the, you're talking behind the Wild Apple?
Yeah, and I guess the Minasha Grill, is there some, where the former Minasha Grill, is there any enhancements behind there too?
Not be, behind the Minasha Grill?
Well, where the old Minasha Grill, where the future coffee shop is, because it was, the alley, or the walkway goes right between the two. Was there only preliminary enhancements behind the Wild Apple?
There, yeah, I don't believe there's space behind the Minasha Grill for any enhancements.
Well, you were talking about expanding it a little bit further to make it look fancier or whatever, and...
No, I wasn't.
At the beginning, you said it would enhance it...
Well, the Wild Apple, yes. I mean, because that was, that, that's just, you know, blacktop there today. And, I mean, can it stay like that? Yes. But both, I think both the designer and the property owners wanted to have a vision for how could this be designed so that it would look more integrated and function better? And that's what the designer did, was to create a concept for what might be done on that private property. That isn't committing us to making those improvements.
Okay. But would there be plan changes if they decided not to commit to it?
No.
Like curbs and whatever?
No.
Okay, there's nothing, it just...
Yeah, I mean, the...
It has to end somewhere, and I don't know how you end it.
Right. And, and the drainage plan was, was designed to address how we're planning on building our walkway. So we were cognizant of that, that we're not wanting to create any drainage problems for the neighbor and that sort of thing. And they've been involved in this process, design process as well. So they are fully aware of what's going on or what's being proposed.
Okay, I have no problem with this, just as long as if they, if they don't commit and if there's added costs to us later on because they don't commit, I'd be a little bit concerned about that because I don't, I wouldn't think it'd be major, but you never know. These artists can come up with some, some stuff. That could cost a lot of money. And this will all be coming back to council again, all these improvements and benches and...
Well, the bid package will be the next thing, yes.
Okay, living room furniture and all the other stuff that we're looking at. Okay, so we'll just discuss those costs at that point then. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Greg, I don't, we don't have a detailed sketch of the wiring and things. Where the six trees are, we could have some sort of an outlet in, in those tree areas there that possibly could do some lighting or something at some point.
There's, there's like overhead string lighting that's shown in the plan. There is also, they show some lower level lighting. I don't know to what extent that's been detailed at this point, but I've...
And the bottom item, the Mill Street, that's not being addressed at this time?
Unfortunately, we don't have the funds to do that now, but I think, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, as we go through future budgets, we ought, you know, we ought to work on that extension because that is, you know, our primary link to the waterfront, other than the marina. And as you know, the marina is not a friendly link for handicap access and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, moving forward with that as a next phase is very critical to how this overall environment ends up.
Just to be aware of, on that end of Mill Street, that's where the old Mill Street Bridge is. And we put that historical plaque in there. There still is a full foundation from the Mill Street Bridge from 1950 that's still there. And you can't get down more than about 10 to 12 inches. And then you're on top of the limestone. And it's, they're big, thick stones. I mean, they built those foundations with. So there's, any type of excavation there is going to be a serious thing to try to accomplish.
I didn't know that.
Well, I was putting that out there so, you know, that, that we know those things ahead of time. So it's always good to know what we're getting into and, because the price would probably triple at that point with that project. So it's the old Mill Street Bridge.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Just one last question. Is there any TIFF boundaries that are being crossed here where things should be handled in TIFF III versus TIFF XIII?
No, there's no expenditures. I think we're done making expenditures in TIFF III. We couldn't make expenditures there if we wanted to.
Okay, because I didn't know if you could cross TIFFs and, because there was probably, were there any enhancements done by TIFF III on their sidewalks or... That people might question later, hey, why, why are you taking these sidewalks if they were paid for with TIFF III and now we're using TIFF XIII money for it?
I, I, I'm not understanding exactly.
Well, I didn't know if sidewalks were put in, if they were put in on TIFF III, we didn't retire TIFF III, did we?
We're working on it.
You're working on it, but can you cross boundaries with TIFF, with different TIFF money going into another TIFF?
If they, there can be expenditures outside the TIFF, it was identified, if it was identified in the project plan. But we're beyond our expenditure period for TIFF III, so we can't do that any longer.
Okay.
Any further questions? Alderman, Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So really, all we're approving tonight is what?
Well, you're, you're giving your okay to this conceptual, you know, plan here and authorizing us to move forward with putting forth the bid documents.
With these approximate dollars?
Correct.
Right? Some things I'd like to see in the bid when it comes forward is an alternate for the unit paving. We're, we're going to do pavers. I think there's about a $10,000 savings in there. And I'm still, I'm not a, a proponent for pavers, where we could do colored stamped concrete in there. I know the designer was pretty hard set on having pavers, and I'm just not convinced. And I think that we should have a voice in that. And also, I think I'd like to see potential alternate in there for the furniture. I, I just, I'm looking at the cost. He said the, the furniture was cheap, or if it disappeared, then we could easily replace it. I kind of struggle with that. And, you know, it's just a chair, I think it was $250 or something. And that's the stuff I think you'll see, could see disappearing. So I'd like to see at least one other idea for something out there rather than having furniture sitting in that alleyway there, or in that walkway. That could, that could disappear. I do have concerns with that, but I'm probably more set on the, on the colored stamped concrete and with the pavers. And I think with the festoon lighting that we're going to do, I think Alderman Taylor brought up... brought up the bird issue, now just with trees, but you could have the proverbial birds on the wire out there with that festoon lighting. And I think it's, if we're having a bird problem now, I think his point is valid, that we may, we may give that some different consideration for lighting. But I don't have any ideas at this point. I didn't even know that we actually had a bird issue there, but I think it's worth maybe people sharing some dialogue on it, at least with the designer. But, so, but those other two items, I'm, I'm still pretty, pretty set on, specifically the pavers. Thank you.
Alderman Benner, did you want to make a motion to have those included as alternates, then?
James, could we...
Go ahead. I'll yield.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. Actually, we have a motion, so we'd be looking for an amendment.
Yes.
Correct. Yes, I'd like to make an amendment that we have at least one other, I'd like to have an alternate price for a, for the colored stamped concrete and blue the pavers. And I'd like to see an alternate on the patio, on the furniture.
There's a motion, a second. I'd just like to get a good understanding of what the furniture means. Does that mean the, what is it called? The, a large table as well as the movable chairs and tables?
Thanks.
Is that the, do you want the trash and recycling fixtures, the bike racks, or...
No, I was just more concerned with the, with the chairs, more than anything, because I think that's an easy thing to...
Okay, tables and chairs?
Just the chairs. I think that, I don't think the tables are as big of a deal, or even tables could even be anchored.
Okay.
Where chairs are a little bit more difficult, but we may look at something different, maybe as a table-chair assembly or something like that.
Well, then you'd want the tables separated, too?
If that's the case, if that's the case. You know, if we can't come up with, with something that...
So you just want the tables and chairs separated as an alternate bid, as well as an alternate for stamped and colored concrete, then?
I can live with that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, just so we're all understanding the same thing, we get the same thing at the end?
Sure.
Okay, is there discussion on the amendment, then, at this point? Seeing no discussion on the amendment, could we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. How much city help is being put in this, and what's the dollar amount? Is this going bid as we init, as initially, they brought forward minus the diagonal walkway without our help, that we were, I heard, last meeting, I heard that all of a sudden we're going to start helping on this project to keep the costs down?
Well, I have a summary of that, but if you look at the orange items on your sheet, you can see where the city is going to be supplying a few signs. They're going to raise a manhole. And then there are some other modifications to the storm and, you know, the storm sewer.
Was that stuff initially included in the first bid, in the first preliminary cost estimate?
Well, when you say the first, that goes back, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure...
The last council meeting. So now this stuff is being removed and being taken care of by city crews?
Correct.
But all I see is a bunch of zeros here.
Well, the figures that were originally proposed are in the light gray.
Okay, right, right below the, between the total...
Alongside.
To the left, that you probably can't read. They're really, really light.
Well, I got zero here, I got zero there. Oh, wow. I didn't even know those existed. And what are those totals? And what are those totals?
I don't...
Since I can barely see them, maybe you have the total.
I don't have the total.
So with those included, are we still over budget or under budget?
Those were the items that we took out to ensure that the bid would come in below budget.
Well, that's my concern. We, we come up with a certain amount, and now all of a sudden, we're just going to do it with our staff. Well, our staff has a lot of other things to do, they, they could be doing throughout the city, and I know every district has their little list that, like, taken care of. So if we're just going to put them on this project now, what gets eliminated? And it's not free money.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
This is staff time in some of these cases, yes.
Oh, yes. And what are these dollar amounts, because they're all shaded now? I thought you'd have that together for us. I know we had it last week.
And the, these were costs if an outside contractor did it, not if our crews did it. So I don't think we would have a cost for our crews to do this. I don't think that was ever...
Well, there is a dollar amount there, whether we do it or not. We could be over budget, under budget on those.
Sure. I'm just saying, I don't know if these are accurate as far as city costs.
We'll have those numbers when we come to finalize this project?
That wouldn't be part of the bid, then, no. The bid would just be outside work.
Well, I'd like the whole bid to have all this cost done, and we have our crews do other things throughout the city that other people would like done.
Then we'll be over budget, yes.
So then I won't be voting for this.
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
I just wanted to see, if anybody wants to talk about the, the bird issue, contact Mike Prokash. He owns three businesses there, plus, well, Charlie's not, Charlie had a serious problem with his overhang at that, at the Manasha Grill, so he, he's not here anymore. But if anybody'd like to be showing what the problem was and, and how bad the problem is, talk to Mike Prokash. He's at the Flying Pig.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just was looking for an opportunity to correct what I said initially. I, I did look at the wrong number, and state the wrong number. The total that we have before us today is 222,000 roughly, which is about 30,000 less than we had two weeks ago. That total also includes 10% contingency for the project. So I still feel that it's, it's close enough to our budgeted amount to send it out to bids and see what comes back. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
So the cost, you're saying that the cost that the city's going to be putting is 14,000 by 60, the total? Well, I heard two different costs, and I didn't have time to answer. I was hoping that Mr. Kyle would have had those numbers that the city was going to put towards this. I hope you have those, I hope you have some firm numbers when this comes back to the council the next time.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call five two.
Item seven is the preliminary plat for the second addition to Woodland Hills. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion on behalf of the Plan Commission to recommend approval of the preliminary plot for the second addition to Woodland Heights, conditioned on the 50-foot setback line from the navigable stream being shown on the plot. Staff review of the drainage easement whis in the city of Manasha, retain and all audit termination of the call to that.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. And actually, the plan that you have included with your packet tonight includes, does it include those? Yeah, it includes those items. At least I think it does. It's pretty small. So I, I saw the larger one earlier, though, but it shows the conditions as well. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I talked to Kevin Engelbert today, and he said we weren't going to take any action on this because the, the Planning Commission didn't take any action on this. There was a public hearing at the Planning Commission, but there was no action taken. Is that correct?
That was the, oh, Director Kyle?
No. The public hearing at the Plan Commission was for the same project that we had the public hearing on tonight, and that was for the rezoning of that area down by the pond. There typically is no public hearing on a subdivision plat, preliminary or final. So what I, what I think, what the issue that was addressed was the piece down by the pond, not this subdivision.
And that just helped me out for the public that's viewing this, too. This was owned at R1, and the state of Wisconsin had an issue with the hut.
No, this, this has nothing to do with what the comments that I made during the public hearing. This, we're not rezoning, we're not changing anything here, other than we're approving this, what is it, 19 or 17 lots that's adjacent to the Woodland Hills subdivision plat.
Okay, so we're not changing any zoning?
Correct.
Yeah, and what is the zoning, current zoning?
It's R1.
R1, okay, all right. I thought we're going to the, the PUD.
That's for the pond, that area by the pond.
Okay. And that's the area closest south to the highway?
Correct.
Okay.
So this, this plot is basically the extension of Gasling, and that it goes slightly to the east and then mainly to the north, if you look at, do you have the right drawing up, James? You don't have the right...
No, I, I just listed to what you're, I'm trying to put it where...
Yeah, you have the other one up on top of your, your pile there that isn't the one that we're talking about. This is the one that we're talking about, if that helps. Does that help?
Somehow I thought this was tied into the south, when I talked to Kevin today on it, that's what we were discussing.
It's, it's confusing, because they both have woodland in the name, correct? Or they're both right, they're both in the same general area, so...
So if it's not the rezoning to the PUD, I'm okay with it.
So this is the one that we're talking about, though, right now? Kelly Wickert, right?
All right, thank you.
Is that who was at the end of the street? Kelly Wickert's house at the end of the street there? That would be kind of a landmark for you, I would think, James? That'd be Kelly Wickert's house, right, a little bit to the west of where that street comes out there? West and south? Does that, does that help you, or no? Okay, I, I just... Okay, great. I forget where we are now. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the preliminary plot. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for December 10th through 17th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 12/10/15 to 12/17/15 in the amount of $566,794.68.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved on the police department's memo dated December 16th, 2015.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item three is the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement between Morton Martin One LLC, Dumke and Associates LLC, and the city of Manasha. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement between Morton Martin One LLC, Dumke and Associates LLC, and the city of Manasha.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I don't know who would answer this, but how many square feet is this building? How many square feet are we leasing?
Do you have the rest of the lease with you, or just this part?
I just have the amendment.
We could probably go pull the lease if you'd like us to. Yeah, should we go on to the next item? Why don't we go on to the next item, and we'll come back to this one once we have that information for you. Item four is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between Manasha Downtown Development LLC and the city of Manasha. Director Kyle, do you want to explain what this does? Oh, I guess you do have a memo in here.
Yeah.
Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the First Amendment to Development Agreement between Manasha Downtown Development LLC and the city of Manasha.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Taylor?
So this, for two months, some of this project scope that they're talking about has already been done. The Broad Street South Side sidewalks, curb, gutter has been done for about two months. And according to this agreement, that's going to be included in it. So I'm just wondering if, looking ahead to 2018 with our, our capital improvement budget for 2018, we have a state federal grant in the amount of $759,500 for the Broad Street reconstruction. Are we going to lose that portion of the money by, by already having this done?
No.
So we can work ahead on this and charge it back?
No, we won't be, this won't get charged back. When they, when they do the design work for Broad Street, all of the improvements for the curb, the gutter, and the sidewalk, anything that's being altered in the right of way will be done under that grant.
It'll be done under what, under this grant?
The grant.
Okay. So by, by that all being brand new now, we wouldn't be putting that under that grant, right?
Well, it depends on the design, what they come back with the design. If they're planning on altering that, that would all then be part of, that could go away.
We're talking the north side of the parking...
The ramp, correct.
Ramp, which has all been completely redone. So that's all coming out with another design?
No, I didn't say that. I said if they did come in with another design whereby that would be altered, it would be, that would be all grant eligible expense.
So then the taxpayers are paying for what's out there right now at some point.
Well, it was what's, what's been restored as part of the project. Otherwise, it would be people walking in gravel for, you know, a couple of years. That wasn't feasible, I didn't think.
I guess what I was wondering if that was still going to be covered with the, with the grant in, in 2018?
The grant would not be retroactive for work that was already done. If that work is going to stay there, then that would be outside of the project scope of the, of the grant for the Broad Street reconstruction.
Okay, and then... I'll pass right now, I got, I got to look at something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So really, Greg, at this point, the outside work on these structures, where the sidewalks will be, is done, that we don't have to worry about equipment being driven on it, or anything like that, that would put it at risk?
Things are always at risk. But, you know, once this, the, once this, this new curb, gutter, and sidewalk is installed, it's part of the public street, and if that's damaged during construction, that is the developer's obligation to repair those damages. So is it possible? Yes. But, you know, the, the, most of the heavy construction has been completed, and the developer and its tenants really want to get this sidewalk done, so they're, you know, not faced with a disrupted condition when they start occupying early in April.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just, I was concerned about that portion of it, especially this time of year, concrete cures pretty slow.
Yeah.
And if they drive a lift, you know, an articulating lift on it or something like that, it could, it could certainly be damaged. And they usually do a pretty good job protecting it by putting some plywood down and things like that, but... it by putting some plywood down and things like that, but I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to do something in vain just to do it.
No, no, again, if it's damaged, they are obliged to repair.
Okay, thank you.
I was watching George Graff's tonight, and he said by the end of the month, there looks like this polar vortex stuff, so I mean, they look, do they look ahead to this? Are they going to do this no matter what?
No, they're, you know, if this is approved, they're going to be in there, and they'll get it done.
Oh, okay. When we talked about the sidewalk early on with Director Radke, we had talked about trying to make it, that sidewalk look a little nicer, like a business campus, and where they put that three-inch border, kind of a relief on each pad of concrete, they would separate it.
The tooling?
The tooling, yeah, that outside edger that they use. And I would hope that, I mean, it's only going to enhance the property, and it certainly can't cost much more than.
I don't know whether that was part of the arrangement, I, I just don't know.
Because I asked Mark about that last April or May, whenever this was out before. I think it'd be a great enhancement to the, to the campus and to the property there.
I, I can inquire, but I can't comment.
If you have a look into that, possibly.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Okay, so a couple minutes ago, we had a motion by, was it Alderman Nichols and Keegan? For the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement between Morton Martin and Dumke Associates and the city. And the question was regarding the total square feet, and the total square footage is 2,770 square feet. And did, do we have a copy of this memo for everyone, or just? No, okay.
There is a memo in the.
Yeah, but that's not the same as this one. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, did they give a reason why it's such a substantial increase?
I can address that.
Thank you.
The, from March 2008 through February 2010, it was $7.90 per square foot. Then it went up to $8.14 per square foot. It went down to $4 a square foot after that, has been stuck on that since 2011. And they, you know, base it off of whatever the market's going to hold, and whatever they think is appropriate, and that's what they came up with. Actually, it was even this amount, as I understand it, from Nancy, she was the one that negotiated it. They wanted more, of course. And she ended up negotiating that dollar figure.
It's still reasonable, it just seemed like a substantial.
Yes.
Increase from what we were paying, which was pretty good.
Yes. Well, and what we were paying was market at the time, and as I understand it, market, I shouldn't even be saying this, because market is higher.
I was going to repeat.
That's not a good thing to say, when the lessor is probably out there.
We had a really good deal for quite a few years, is what it boils down to, and now they're trying, you know, get more closer to.
No, and it's fair. I was just, usually when something takes a jump that much, I just look at it from a percentage perspective. And when you look at what inflation is, or whatever, you know, it's certainly more than that, but still fair. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. Did any of our secret shoppers call up and see what they're trying to lease the other part for that hasn't been leased for multiple years?
I know that a local business did look at that. I didn't ask what the price was, but he told me it was significantly more expensive than the place he currently rents in Manasha per square foot. So I'm guessing it's probably more than what we're paying. But I didn't ask him the.
Yeah, and Director McCanney did ask me for some information on commercial lease rates, and so I center a number, I don't recall how many, but I, I did some, looking into what was available in the area, and I centered that information. And I'm still confident we're doing okay.
Okay, good. As long as you're confident.
There's no further discussion. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Item five is the 2016 municipal property insurance. We'll get there eventually here. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on this before we have a motion?
We did go to McClone Agency seeking alternate quotes for property insurance, and this is what we, we received back from them. They had attempted to go to Impic, which we already had a quote from, so right now we have three quotes. One is Impic, $32,211. LGPIF, which is $46,635. And then the most recent one is Chubb Insurance Group, which is a worldwide insurance company. This one does include boiler and machinery. We pay through Civmic Boiler and Machinery, separate, that's $1,000 approximately, $1,001, so that's why I said approximately, it's close enough. And that is with a $500 deductible. Through Chubb Insurance Group, they did give us two quotes, one with a $1,000 deductible, and then the other with a $5,000 deductible. And again, that one does include boiler and machinery, so if you take off 1,000 bucks, that's what we received. I was, I was just going to mention that the Chubb Group also did, they put together a little comparison of the coverage that they provide versus what LGPIF provides. The difference really, there were a lot of no, 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 no's on the LGPIF, and that is, when I looked at the specific coverages, has to do with the fact that it's business insurance. So a lot of the types of things that they cover really don't pertain to a municipal entity. So a lot of the things that, the compare, it was more difficult to compare, I guess.
So we're looking for a motion at this time to secure property insurance from one of the three companies. Typically, the lowest cost option would be preferred, but if someone wishes one of the other ones, we could definitely discuss that as well. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the 2016 municipal property insurance with Municipal Property Insurance Company in the amount of $32,211.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Item six is the underground storage tank insurance. Didn't you want to comment on that one as well?
Yes, thank you. I did want to put on, I, I had to get this on the agenda, because I was before the Administration Committee at the beginning of November. We had a renewal amount from the current company that provides underground storage tank insurance for us, that's Ace American, which was $4,632. And then there was an inquiry about seeking alternate bids. I had not initially gone out for alternate bids, and you, we had just secured this kind of insurance, you may remember, I believe it was 2010. So we had gone out 10, 11, 12, 13 for alternate bids. Some members that are on the common council would not know this, but we had, I believe it was in 2012 when we went out, we had, went with their, the broker, two companies declined to provide even a quote because of the Marina. In 2013, we only had two options, and the broker had indicated to us, you're lucky you got two quotes, your tanks are aging, there are a number of companies that aren't going to provide quotes anymore. And of course, the Marina is always an issue with underground storage tanks. And so that's why we just sought a renewal. We did send it out, you'll notice in the email, right after the meeting, I had sent a request to the broker. I do not have quotes that we can say yes or no to yet. We just received back information indicating kind of rough quotes. One was between 3,500 and 5,000. They need completed application, which is almost completed. The other one, and the other one wants a completed signed application as well, which is the one that indicated, I forgot what rate was, but that rate, insurance rate was much less, but they also will not provide a specific quote without this application process. And I will tell you that they are asking for copies of the tank tightness tests performed within the last year. We have not had any tank tightness tests performed within the last year on the Marina tanks. There's one scheduled, I understand, for this January. So I don't even have that to provide. So I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm, I'm asking you what you would like me to do. We already did miss the deadline for the renewal. They wanted us, you know, they give you a quote that's good for 30 days. I'm pretty certain, I guess, that they would still provide coverage with our, our current one. We can obviously continue securing the additional quotes, and if we get them in time, you know, if you want them to, me to just select a carrier if it's lower, we can do that. Otherwise, if, we could continue securing the additional quotes and bring them back when we get them. But that's where we are right now. Oops, sorry.
Okay. Alderman Zelinski?
We're talking about all the tanks, the ones at the city garage and the Marina?
Yes.
Was there ever any discussion, I don't know, with the Marina tank? That's above ground, isn't it?
These are underground storage tank.
Are they all underground?
Four, correct. Two at the Marina and two at Public Works.
Okay, I was just wondering what other Marinas do with tanks, because I know the Yacht Club has one, do they lease theirs, or? Did we ever look into that, just leasing the tanks? Because there's a provider that fills the tanks.
Director Tungay?
For another option of fuel supply, because I don't know what the Marina does down in Apet.
I'd have to look into that, I'm not sure what the Yacht Club is doing.
We could do that, well, you could call other Marinas to find out what they're doing, because I'm sure they, that might be another option for next year.
This is in the capital improvements plan for the Marina? If you want to expand on that a little bit, Director Tungay?
Uh, yes, I, I can't recall the exact year, but, well, the actual tank replacement is not in the capital improvement budget. We're, we're, that will have to be done somewhere beyond five years from now. We are, we've gotten some opinions on the conditions of our, of the tanks down there, and they're doing okay. You know, we still have a period of time where their, their life expectancy is, is still there.
I just thought it'd be a good idea to call the other Marinas to find out how they handle their tanks, and, and see if we lease them, because I know people that have LP, they lease the tanks, or they have an option of buying them, and the prices done accordingly, I'm sure Gero's filling their tanks and filling ours, and, and they lease them and sell them, and that might be an option for us, that they might assume some of this liability on the tank.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Captain, are, are you comfortable with the coverage that we have received from Ace American in the past?
It is the minimum requirement, meets the minimum requirements, that's what I had submitted. This is based on federal regulations, that cities have to demonstrate financial ability in case of a leak in the past, and some of the council members would not know this, but in the past, the city of Manasha relied on its bond rating to demonstrate that financial ability. We do keep checking every year when this comes up, we go through what the, because there's multiple ways that you can demonstrate financial ability, and when this initially came up, when the city's bond rating dropped, and I believe it was 2010, might have been 11, I think it was 10. There were a whole slew of different ways that you could demonstrate financial ability. Some of them, you could set money aside, or earmark a certain amount of money, or, you know, there were, there were other tests, but this was the one that was selected, was to go through the insurance, purchase the insurance. So at some point, we're hoping, in the near future, that we won't have to do this any longer. I know that our bond rating, we actually do, as far as what our rating is right now, we do meet that threshold, but we don't have any bonds that are outstanding, and you actually have to have bonds that are outstanding at that rating. But then there are also some other financial tests. And, you know, those take up staff time in order to, you know, kind of go through that whole scenario, and at this point, at some time, I'm sure that we'll perhaps in the very near future meet it, and then we can cancel the insurance, it's just that we have to have it until we get to that point.
And our current coverage expires when?
On the 31st.
Okay. I feel that it is very important to have this insurance. It surprises me that we have underground storage tanks. I have, my dad was in the, worked in the oil industry for a lot of years, and I remember there was a time when everyone, a lot of farmers and other folks had to get rid of their underground tanks and move them above ground, so I feel this insurance is important. And seeing as it expires at the end of this month, I'm comfortable with continuing, seeing if we can continue with what we have. So I'll make the motion to approve the underground storage tank insurance with Ace American Insurance in the amount of $4,632.
There's a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Item J is held over business. Item one is street use application for Steve. Do we have a motion? Attorney Captain, if we have you comment on what we held it for last time?
And I did receive the updated, um, street use application.
And I did receive the updated street use application with additional signature of Alderman Taylor, and then also received an updated.
Description?
Yes. I'm trying to think of what it's called, the insurance endorsement, which did more specifically define the area. So I would have signed it, but the, it all went out before I had a chance to.
Okay. Okay, so it's complete at this point, and if there's a motion to approve at this point, then? Alderman Keegan? Not everyone at once.
His was flashing.
Oh, okay.
I will make a motion to approve the street use application for Steve for Thursday, December 31, 2015, from 3:00 PM to 12:30 AM. The Dode Island Development Council and Community Forwarding.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. It's described elsewhere in there as well. There's been some comments about the 3:00 PM versus the 9:00 PM, but it is described within the, within the application. Actually, in the back, Milwaukee Street is closed a little bit earlier than the rest. So are there questions regarding this topic? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six zero with Alderman Taylor abstaining.
Chief, do you want to grab Alderman Taylor again? Oh, you might not have to. Looks like he could see what was going on. Well, the cameraman was telling him that he could come back in. Item L is appointments. The first appointment is the appointment of Penny, changed your name, Peggy Stino to the Fox Cities Hotel Room. No, I said changed her name. Tax commission for the term of 116 to 123116. Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to appoint Peggy Stino to Fox Valley, Fox Cities Hotel Room and Tax Commission.
Is there a second? Is a motion, a second? Any discussion?
Peggy, do you want the job?
I asked her. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. There is a second appointment dealing with the Expo Center that'll come at the next meeting. It's the Redevelopment Authority, something, it's a Redevelopment Authority Commission of some sort that directs the operations of the Expo Center. And we do have someone for that, but his letter of interest didn't come in on time. The next item is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the recess to the Board of Public Works. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to recess to the Board of Public Works.
Fair second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are at recess.